Welcome, everyone, to our September 11th legislative session. And first thing, I'll rise for the pledge.
... To the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Fister, do you want to call the role?
Council President Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Ulrich.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmembers Oppone.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you. And before we get on to our salutations, I want to read a thank you note that we got from Leona. She's sitting in the front row tonight. She says, "Dear City Council, I'm so happy you invited me to read my Peaceful Valley poem. Thank you so, so, so much. I can't express how happy I am that you are such thoughtful leaders in my city. I am so grateful." Leona, thanks so much for being here again. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Now, we have some proclamations, sorry, salutations. 9/11 Day of Service and Remembrance, read by Councilmember Wilkerson. And who do we have receiving?
Chief Schaefer, I believe, will be receiving this.
Oh, come on up.
Whereas on September 11th, 2001, the American people endured the worst terrorist attack on U.S. soil in a nation's history. And with courage and heroism, and in response to this tragedy, Americans across the country came together in a remarkable spirit of patriotism and unity and carried out countless acts of kindness, generosity, and compassion. And whereas community organizations and family members of 9/11 victims began observing the anniversary of September 11th as a charitable service day to honor the memory of those who were lost and those who united in response to the tragedy, including first responders and volunteers. Whereas participating in service and remembrance activities on September 11th is a positive and respectful way to remember the lives of those lost, pay tribute to those who rose in service, and honor those who continue to serve our country today, including active duty and reserve soldiers, and their families, veterans, and first responders. Now therefore, I, Nadine Woodward, Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, do hereby proclaim September 11th, 2023, as 9/11 Day of Service and Remembrance in Spokane and encouraging citizens to honor the lives of those lost through participation in community service and remembrance ceremonies on this day and throughout the year.
Very humble to receive this proclamation, supported by our council. Thank you very much for your leadership, your service, your support of our mission. The 343 firefighters that perished that day, as well as the 342-plus that we've lost since that time, and those that we continue to lose are always in our memories. And they are one of the prevailing reasons why we do what we do. And we're very proud of that here in Spokane to have such a dedicated group of people that are fortunate enough to lead under your service and your direction. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And next, Councilmember Stratton will read the POW MIA Recognition Day. And do we have anybody from VFW Post 51 here? No? Okay. We'll make sure that they get it. Go ahead. Do you want me to still read it? Yes, please.
Whereas the United States National POW MIA Recognition Day is observed across the nation on the third Friday of September each year. This date, this year, that date is September 15th, 2023. Americans take time to remember. And whereas VFW Post 51 has recognized that 83,000 American service personnel are still missing in action. These servicemen and women are assumed dead but are still unaccounted for, and service of those who were prisoners of war, POW, as well as those who are missing in action, MIA. And whereas VFW Post 51 shall observe the 15th of September, 2023, day to pause to remember the sacrifices and service of those who were prisoners of war, as well as those who are still missing in action. Now therefore, I, Nadine Woodward, Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, do hereby proclaim September 15th, 2023, as POW MIA Recognition Day in Spokane and encourage all citizens to join in remembering the sacrifices and service of those who were prisoners of war, as well as those who are still missing in action.
And next, we have Constitution Week, read by Councilmember Bingle. Want to go ahead?
All right. Whereas September 17th, 2023 marks the 236th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America, a document which stands as a testament to the tenacity of Americans through history to maintain their liberties, freedoms, and inalienable rights. And whereas, in 1956, due to the passionate advocacy of the Daughters of American Revolution, President Eisenhower signed Public Law 915, a joint resolution which guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designated September 17th through the 23rd, as Constitution Week. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, now therefore, I, Nadine Woodward, Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, do hereby proclaim September 17th to the 23rd, 2023, as Constitution Week in Spokane, and encourage all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves.
And next up, we have Mr. Gene Brake, who has a Spokane flag donation. And I'd like him to come up and tell us a little bit about what this is. And I think Councilmember Stratton has something for you, too, right? Okay.
Thank you very much for inviting me to be here. As we all know, in 2020, the City of Spokane decided to begin looking for a new flag design. So in 2020, being historic preservationist, I wanted to dig into more about, tell me about that first flag. So I was asked to speak a little bit about what that was. So how did that first flag come to be? Well, it was the brainchild of the Spokane Ad Club in 1912, and they created a contest to come up with a design. The contest offered a $25 cash prize to the winning entry. And in case you wonder, that would be the equivalent of $787 today. So it wasn't just a little piddly 25 bucks. The Spokane Chronicle Archives gives us a little information. The August 12th, 1912 edition shows that Spokane's municipal flag, after a whirlwind three-weeks contest conducted by the Spokane Ad Club, arrived on Thursday evening. Not to one, not to two, but to three persons falls the honor of creating the design. They are W.J. Comer's, cashier of the Union Trust and Savings Bank, J. Frank Hobbins, advertising manager of Gobble, Pratt &amp; Robbins, and Mrs. Herman Peterson of South 520 Cook Street. I guess that's where she worked at that time. Though the 1912 contest had come up with a design created by our citizens, it wasn't until 1915 the city adopted it as its official flag. On June 9th, 1915, the Spokane Chronicle talks about its coming-out party. "The first official Spokane flag, which was made of silk by the John W. Graham Company, was adopted by the official city flag by city commissioners and was today presented to the Spokane Ad Club by the makers at the regular weekly luncheon of the club at the Davenport Hall of Doges. Miss Spokane, Marguerite Motte was present and received the flag on behalf of the club. It will be preserved in the office of the club in the Davenport Hotel Building." I was so taken by the design of the historic flag and knew that, I live in the Corbin Park Historic District, I thought, "I need one. We need one in our neighborhood." As Corbin Park was the first historic district in the City of Spokane. So I thought we should at least have one. So of course, one wasn't available. So I reached out to a custom flag company in my hometown of San Antonio, Texas, to have it recreated. I actually had three of them made, just in case one comes up missing or whatever. One day, I was talking to my council representative Karen Stratton, and she mentioned, I mentioned that we, I'd done this, and asked if she had, they had one here in the city council chambers. And she said they didn't. So I had to make sure that was resolved. So, on behalf of the residents of the Corbin Park Historic District, I want to present this flag to City Council, and may this flag remind you of our city's historic legacy and of the value of historic preservation.
Could we show the whole audience?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
This is the right way.
Make the S go in the right place.
Can everyone see this?
Thank you so much.
Frame it. Put it on your wall.
Put it on my wall.
Put it on your wall. Wait. I'm not good at this.
That's okay.
How's that?
You're almost retired, anyway.
Stop.
Four months.
Put it down.
Right. Okay. How many are on here? How many are on here? Just to give you a sense. There's 15. Okay, great. Oh, there we go. Thank you. Thank you, Gene.
All right, we're going to switch gears a little bit here. We're going to go to our open forum. And just a reminder, for those who have not been here, we don't have clapping. What? Is there poetry? I don't have that on my list, but... Do we have a poet here tonight for poetry at the podium? Yes. Okay. Come on up.
Okay, thank you, council, and thank you Spokane Arts for doing the In the Neighborhood project. I am a proud resident of Peaceful Valley Neighborhood, and my poem tonight is called "The Monroe Street Bridge." As I walk through the enclosures of the Monroe Street Bridge, each feels like the private middle of a children's food tantrum. Cocoa Pebbles, string cheese, half-bitten packets, milk cartons spilled, beef sticks, Lunchables crushed and strewn, donut crumble, cup of noodles tucked in a puddle. Why is this? I don't know. It means nothing. There are wild deer below, meandering at the river's bank. Look, a man points them out to me, and he is so happy. Wild deer are a metaphor, or they're not. Near nature and children of the sun. New spray paint above the falls, spray. She loves you, don't... Don't what? There it is. Jump. At the end, there's a labyrinth about coyote and loneliness and anger. At the center of it, stand and say the final words, "In anger." It echoes back right through your heart, like a surprise, and like an animal, and like a pump. I turn and walk home into the lilac-setting sun with my son. Thank you.
Thank you. Don't go too far. Okay, thank you. And now, we're open forum. Just a reminder, for those who haven't been here before, we don't have clapping, cheering, booing, or public outbursts. We have a two-minute time limit, and no banners, no signs waving. And I just want to remind everybody that we have a mutual respect part of, this is what this is, mutual respect. And all persons who attend a council meeting or interact with council members or council staff in any type of forum or communication, regardless of the form or format, must act respectfully toward all persons and not commit unlawful harassment, as defined in RCW. So mutual respect includes all of us here, includes how we interact with you and how you interact with us, and how you interact with each other. So, I have 26 on, who signed up for open forum. We only allow 15. So I'm hoping that the folks who are signing you up let you know that there are only 15 slots. So we're going to start with Tom Robinson. I think what I'll do is call three persons at a time. You can come down, there's spaces here in the front. Tom, Tanya, and then Sunshine.
I'm a resident of Spokane. I'm here to talk about Milkshake. Now, Milkshake happened to be a Proud Boy who joined up with Matt Shay's mob. And Milkshake's currently serving five years in federal prison because he went on January 6th and assaulted at least one federal officer and maybe more federal officers because he was one of the first to break into the Capitol Building. As this Proud Boy came to Spokane, which is why I'm talking about him, I had set up a memorial, I had made 30 white crosses and put them up outside City Hall here as Matt Shay was holding some sort of anti-science event here, trying to go against masks, vaccinations, whatever. And Milkshake specifically came over from Seattle to attend that event, to march in that event, and then he started accosting me right outside City Hall. He eventually scared the hell out of me, and I left, so he took my white crosses and threw them in a pile and busted up a bunch of them. Now, this is what religious leaders are going to tell you how religious they are? This is what they do when there's nobody that's got a camera on them. There were several TV cameras that were on us at the beginning because they knew that this Proud Boy was about to accost me. So whenever there's not a TV camera around, you've got to watch out for these people. I have been the victim of malicious mischief at TCAPP, T-Crap, because those people also will get violent if you don't watch out for them. So every time you turn around, you've got to watch these people.
Thank you. Tanya, and then Sunshine and Lyle.
Hey, thank you, council members. I think the people that have cars right now, you know, the cops need to be behind them, you know, seeing if they have any tickets or any mischief in their cars, you know, because there are people that are driving right now that are recklessly, you know, and they're rubbing up their engines too much, you know, and they're scaring other people around them, too. You know, and some people, you know, they don't have a driver's license, too, and they're letting them go out and drive without a license, too. And they need to see why they're doing that, too, you know. And plus, I don't think they should, they should have a driver's license if we have our own cars, if we drive ourselves. They should have, let us have a driver's license if we drive other people around, too.
Thank you, Tanya. Sunshine, Lyle, and Michael.
Hello, you guys. Sunshine Wigan from Spokane. I need my support animal tonight. So my hat, I have a picture of a man on there. And he passed away this week because we don't have proper bicycle lanes. Since 2014, 750 people have been struck by cars in Spokane, 78 of them were killed. National Highway Traffic Safety Administration statistics show 19 cyclist injuries per every 100,000 residents. Okay, I'm going to switch gears. So I was doing some outreach this week to a homeless person, and a lot of the time, we will offer to put them in a hotel. She was in transitional housing, and her situation was, she had had as many extensions as she could. She still has two months until her long-term stable housing, right? And we chose to put her in a hotel for a week. So she lost all her stuff, and her biggest thing, she had been through a very violent attack, she wasn't even worried about that. She was very distraught about this. She's going to have to re-get everything again for her apartment. And so I was wondering if maybe we could, you know, someone who has a back injury obviously would need a hotel versus like a couple hundred dollars for a storage unit. It would have been cheaper to get her a storage unit. She says, "I'm going to be out here homeless anyways, so what's the difference if it's one week off the street out of that two months? I'd rather have a storage unit and not lose my kids' stuff and sentimentals, et cetera." And then talking about how we're talking about putting a fence around over by these projects, the Catholic charity projects down there, to kind of help with the violence and things of that nature. Number one, we built them so close together that we knew this was going to happen. This is, these are the statistics of poverty, and we are going to have that. And I don't think putting a fence around it is going to help because Rob says, "Oh, well, it's not our residence." I call BS on that because some of it is.
Time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we have Lyle, Michael, and Michelle. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council. My name's Lyle. I'm a business owner from the Spokane Valley, a family man, and I'm a deacon at a local church. I'm addressing the City Council today because I have some alarming concerns of the current direction of the City Council and a recent spokesman review report stating a current council member and process of censure against the mayor for attending a religious worship concert. On this statement, it says, "Alone, I don't have the same weight as a full vote, and we do not have the position of all members," Oppone said Tuesday. "This makes it clear to the community that if this passes, the council is providing leadership, and it stands against hate." So I'm going to ask you where the hate is, because being at the concert, this is what I saw, and I want to kind of bring this to the public awareness here. I saw people ready to pray. I heard people crying out. I saw people who wanted answers for the many concerns they have today. I heard a local pastor give a prayer over a community. I heard local pastors pray for individuals over personal addictions. I witnessed many throwing their addictions onto stage and surrendering their life to Jesus. I saw baptisms taking place. I saw the man who broke into Sean Foight's car show up and surrender his life to Jesus and ask for forgiveness. I saw ways to cure the homeless crisis in our community and give hope to those whom are struggling with mental health or addictions. I heard a pastor who the media hates call to action every believer to get past their political indifference and pray for our leaders like believers are called to do. I then heard the same pastor corporately pray for the fire victims and a mayor and other leaders onstage and other leaders such as yourself in the community. He prayed a prayer of blessing, wisdom, strength, and understanding, and how to lead well in times of crisis. That's what I heard. So I ask you, as a citizen, not of any organization or group, just a business owner that's concerned, that's a family man, I'd like you to show me this Christian national behavior, I don't even know the definition of what that entails. Show me the racism, show me the detriment this brought to our communities. Tell me how this doesn't heal a community in a positive way. Why are you condemning good? The ones who are politicizing the event are you guys.
Lyle, your time's up.
Is it?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Michael, Michelle, and then I think it's Naleen, Nyleen? Nyleen. Welcome.
Good evening, City Council members. Thank you for your service to all the citizens of the City of Spokane. I know you certainly faced many difficult challenges. It was exactly 150 years ago, in 1873, H.T. Crowley moved to Spokane Falls to be a blessing to the original residents of this area. In that year, there was only a small handful of new settlers. He embraced all the residents of the area without regard to race or position, and he came to be loved by all. In fact, H.T. Crowley never carried a firearm, though he traveled widely through the England Empire. H.T. Crowley, Crowley's passion for the people of Spokane was no less intense than his passion for serving the Lord Jesus Christ as a missionary, as a teacher, and as a civic leader. He founded the first school. He was the first teacher. He founded the first church, and other charitable ventures in this emerging community. And today, in 2023, you are our civic leaders. I'm praying that the Lord Himself will give each of you the courage to actively resist any future attempts to limit or quash the freedom of speech, freedom of assembly, freedom of religion, or freedom to pray for a citizen, a civic leader, a religious leader, or even a mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Pappas, and then Nyleen and Mike.
Hello, council members, and thank you for letting me speak here today. My name is Michelle Pappas, and I am here because I have experienced housing insecurity and homelessness, both as a child and as a parent. It was exactly 150 years ago. In 1873, H.T. Crowley moved to Spokane Falls to be a blessing to the original residents of this area. In that year, there was only a small handful of new settlers. He embraced all the residents of the area without regard to race or position, and he came to be loved by all. In fact, H.T. Crowley never carried a firearm, though he traveled widely through the England Empire. H.T. Crowley, Crowley's passion for the people of Spokane was no less intense than his passion for serving the Lord Jesus Christ as a missionary, as a teacher, and as a civic leader. He founded the first school. He was the first teacher. He founded the first church, and other charitable ventures in this emerging community. And today, in 2023, you are our civic leaders. I'm praying that the Lord Himself will give each of you the courage to actively resist any future attempts to limit or quash the freedom of speech, freedom of assembly, freedom of religion, or freedom to pray for a citizen, a civic leader, a religious leader, or even a mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Pappas, and then Nyleen and Mike.
Hello, Council members, and thank you for letting me speak here today. My name is Michelle Pappas, and I am here because I have experienced housing insecurity and homelessness both as a child and as a parent. I want to thank you for your resolution, which you passed on August 28th regarding the Regional Homeless Authority. Today, I ask that you continue to hold to this resolution. I ask you to be advocates in the room that we have not been invited in or allowed to be in. I ask you to assist in opening a real community process that is informed by our community and centers housing, not detention. Many important voices were missing from the table. Please consider inviting members of Experienced Matters, the CHHS Board, the Continuum of Care Board, or the Homeless Coalition to the planning group that is continuing to meet. Opening up opportunities for homeless and housing expertise in this process is essential to success. Those closest to the problems are closest to the solutions and should be at the decision-making meetings. I love Spokane. It is a place where I feel part of a community and that I am not alone. Because of this love of Spokane and the community that we have here, I come to you today to ask you to seek similar love and kindness, that we can do this together by centering those with lived experience and bring them to the table, reminding each other that no one is alone in this. Please hold the resolution passed on August 29th, and thank you again for your time.
Thank you. We have Nyleen, Mike, and Lisa. Could you pronounce your name for me?
Nyleen.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I want to start out with a direct quote that my good friend said that I believe speaks volumes on what is happening tonight or what will happen in the future with the censuring of Nadine. And this is a quote. "The leftists on the Spokane City Council are claiming that an outdoor Christian worship event featuring worship leader Sean Foote was a Christian nationalist and a white nationalist event," which is pure garbage. They are claiming this because Pastor Matt Shea was a speaker there, and after the hit job and slander against him, he remains their number-one target and whipping boy for all things Christian. If this is true, then almost every church service is as well. The truth is, the mess our society is in today is a result of secular nationalists, a planned destruction of traditional morals and values, and the elimination of God and faith from the public square, and as much as possible from our lives as well. Go walk around downtown. It didn't get to that state because thousands of tweakers and fentanyl addicts are spending too much time in church, end quote. So we won't be sitting down anymore. We will be standing up, and we will be flipping tables. I'm tired of this witch hunt and that you guys are public servants. First and foremost, you work for me, you work for all of them. We are not going away. You're, it's, it's terrible. I can't, your insidious name-calling such as Christian nationalists, white nationalists, white supremacists, and domestic terrorists do nothing but evoke hate. If you want to see an actual domestic terrorist, look in the mirror. The Spokane City Council are nothing but short of communist jackals. Thank you.
The audience needs to be quiet and respectful. If there is another outburst, I will ask security to remove you from the chambers. Next up is Mike, and then Lisa and Joel.
How many Mike's you got?
Mike Fairborn?
Yeah, that's me.
Okay.
Okay, everybody, here we go. Thank you. I would, I would like to suggest to the council that, that the mayor was in good faith, that what the mayor did was a benefit to the community, and that censure is not the appropriate response. I spent years of my life on the streets, drug addict and car wrecker. Today, I lead two significant companies, and I've had 34 years of sobriety. I think prayer really changes things, and I would appreciate that you would not take advantage to make a political thing out of something that was a necessary moment that a leader that's doing her best, just like you are, thought was important for our community. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa, Joel, and Ron.
Thank you, President, President Canir and City Council members. I am a 35-year member of the Spokane community and a business owner here for 32 years. I am here in support of our city mayor, Nadine Woodward, and our rights as citizens in this country and in our city. I am, I have known Nadine because she's been a very public figure, and I have seen her role in the community and seen her operate with high values and integrity, and I think they speak for themselves. I am not here to, to speak names or labels, but to talk about rights, freedom, and the purpose of city officials. All the energy that has been put into this event that a mayor attended to pray for our city and our county and people who are hurting and lost everything, prayer has such a spiritual value and a community value. Prayer and worship is something that most people do in some form or another, irregardless of their beliefs or values. And to the act of censorship, to me, and honestly, this, this whole situation goes against the rights that we have in a country of freedom of religion and freedom of speech. As a community member and taxpayer in Spokane, I would appreciate, and I would commission the council to use their time and energy and taxpayer dollars more efficiently and intentionally to work to, with Mayor Nadine Woodward, to address and solve the serious issues facing our community, to protect the great city of Spokane that we have such a privilege to live in and love instead of working against our mayor and her efforts on our behalf. If you are calling for censorship of one, then I think we need to call for censorship of all, including each of you. Thank you.
So Joel, Ron, and Sheri Barnett.
Hi, I'm Joel. I came in a couple weeks ago about the whole public restroom thing. At this point, I'm here again. I just wanted to say you guys really should put in some public restrooms, whatever. And thanks to this one dude, he gave me his email, whatever. I just sent you guys an email because he said we couldn't put it on the TV. Whatever. I don't know if the pictures will show up, but it's all like areas downtown. And the first two little drop pen things, whatever, in my Google Maps thing, that's all like, just like, maybe like 1,000 feet from where we are right now. It's just two spots, but I only had like 20 minutes to find them. But it's all poop, literally poop downtown on the sidewalks somewhere, you know? All the pictures, the two drop tags, it's all poop. It's gross. We need public bathrooms. I mean, I'm doing a lot more into this than just that. Like, I've been contacting some businesses about public restrooms and stuff, you know, and then they, how they would be and how much they would cost and everything. And then after figuring that out, I was going to go and try and see if I could talk to businesses and stuff or whatever and see if there is any places they're willing to, you know, have them. But they need to be accessible outside, though, because otherwise, if they're just inside a building, you know, that didn't do nobody any good because they're just going to be pooping outside still. Yeah, that's just what I wanted to talk about, though, because, I mean, it's really gross.
Thank you.
It's everywhere.
Ron, and then Sheri and Mike Gleason.
My name's Ron Walker, and I want to start out by saying thank you for all of your efforts. I respect each one of you, and I can actually say I love each one of you, not the way this world does, but in different kind, and which is full of respect. I'm an Army veteran and have three kids and 11 grandchildren, and I've been a referee for 42 years. So, and as a referee, we listen to the coaches and we listen to the players, and I think that's what you guys do. So I'm asking you to stand up on behalf of our children. I first found out about this, and as I got to research into this, I was amazed, but I found this book in the county, city, junior highs, and I'm waiting on a response for District 81 to see if it's in our children's libraries here in our city. And it's called Perfectly Normal. And as I looked into it, literally, it's a porn book. And if you look into it, you'll go, oh, my gosh, how could they get this out in the, out into our libraries? And so I researched and downloaded the porn, child pornography laws in our state, and I began to read them, and this book is illegal. And so I was amazed at nobody doing anything about it. You guys give your opinions. I'd ask that you give your opinions for our children. This is age 10 and above, and if you want to borrow the book and pass it around, you're welcome to. Nobody has to buy one. I'll let you use mine. And I'm guaranteeing you that I think all of you will agree that this book does not need to be there for our children. It's not advancing the education of our children.
Thank you, Ron. Your time's up.
Thanks.
Sheri, Mike, and Zachary.
Yes, I'm Sheri Barnett. I live in Spokane. President Canir and all members of the City Council, I really do want to speak on this today because I understand that you're going to vote to ask the censure of Mayor Nadine Woodward and to ask her that she must totally apologize for her attendance to a wonderful event. There was no hate. There was no racial aspect. There was nothing like that. I was at that event. And to censure her, she has a right to worship. She has a right to freedom of, same as she went to the gay, ride in the gay parade or whatever. She has a right. And I have seen since Nadine was elected mayor, there's been a very subtle undermining by the majority in this city council. I don't like to say it, but I've seen it, and I wouldn't say it unless I had seen it. And she has a right to worship and pray. The First Amendment is for her, and we should respect her. We should work with her. And I do believe that everyone in this city needs to pray for this city because I do also think that Nadine needs to stand up for her own rights, that she should not apologize for what she did. And I do hope and pray that this city will reelect her and that she will be a strong and loving mayor because as being in charge of the city, you represent the best. You want this city to survive and do well.
Sheri, we're out of time.
Yes, I know.
Thank you.
I'm leaving. Thanks a lot.
Mike, Zachary, and Ginny.
I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, and I didn't really prepare anything, but just hang on here a minute. Somebody told me that the City Council wants to, and I guess the word is censure, Nadine Woodward. And on the record, I'm not a big Nadine Woodward fan, but the fact that that word censure means expressing a severe disapproval of someone, especially in a formal statement because she attended a Christian worship service, is petty. I mean, come on, you guys. She has a right to go see and do what she wants to do, and to come down on her like that, I mean, it, it's not a good thing. In fact, it's a really, it's, it's just petty. So, you know, you guys all stand up and say the Pledge of Allegiance. "I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic, which we still are, for who it stands, one nation, and we still say under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." It's liberty and justice for all. And I need, I really believe you need to grant this woman the same liberty and justice Nadine Woodward that you have and you want for yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. And Zachary and Ginny.
Hello, my name's Zach McGuckin. I'm a member of the Party for Socialism and Liberation, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm not interested in any cultural war narratives. I'm here to speak about the GTN Express Pipeline. So the GTN Pipeline already exists. It's a pipeline that's coming down from Canada through Idaho, Washington, Oregon, and California. And this, the 21st of this month, the Federal Energy Regulations Committee, the FERC, is going to do a vote on granting funding and permission to TC Energy to increase the supply of natural gas through this pipeline. This pipeline was built in the 50s, and they're not updating the infrastructure. They're just updating pump stations. So it's extremely likely to leak. TC Energy has a long history of leaked pipelines, including infamous cases like the Keystone Pipeline, and this vote is getting pushed back to this month because the original time FERC scheduled the vote was in July. Two days before the vote, one of the TC pipelines exploded, and so they pushed it back. The city needs to use its voice and condemn the expansion of this pipeline. If this expansion goes through, it will literally make everybody in the West Coast's life worse. So thank you for the time.
Thank you. Ginny.
So I'm not here to defend Nadine Woodward as our mayor, but as a United States citizen, this foolishness is a direct attack on all Christians and against our First Amendment rights. I'd like to remember this, Council. You are employed by the taxpayers to represent all citizens of Spokane and to better our community, not to advance your own foolish agendas. Stop wasting our money. As the body of Christ, we pray for all of our leaders. We pray for all of humanity. We pray against biblical sin and repent for our own. Our war is not against you. Our war is not against flesh and blood, but against Satan and the rulers of darkness. We welcome every person who comes in in love. God loves every one of His children, and His heart breaks for those who are lost. Don't mistake love for weakness. We stand with Jesus Christ and the angel armies, and you will not stop us. We will worship in the streets and in the mountains. We pray in our homes, our workplaces, our churches, and our jails. Angel armies are dispatched when we declare the Word of the Lord. When he can't, when we can't speak, God hears our thoughts, and I assure you, He hears yours as well. Darkness is about to fall. God is taking back Spokane, and He is taking back all the nations. We each need to decide what side of history we will be on. We each need to decide our eternal destination. But this, I promise you, God is raising up the church, and the gates of hell will not prevail against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Done with open forum and on to the consent agenda. So, Ms. Sister, do you want to read that for us?
We have one appointment. Did you want me to read that first?
Oh, certainly. Yes.
Appointment to the Spokane Park Board of Douglas Kelly, first term for five-year term from September 12, 2023 to September 11, 2028.
Okay. And we heard from him today. It's very impressive. Any comments from Council? Okay, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Great. Thank you. And now on to the consent.
Council President, can we take number three separately?
Yes.
I have to abstain.
Reports, contracts, and claims. Number one, five-year valuable link with American AVK, Minden, Nevada, for the annual supply of gate valves for the water department. Estimated annual expenditure, $225,000, including tax. Number two, small business assistance awards round two in accordance with approved tranche three of ARPA allocations to 31 local small businesses, $1,037,097.82. Item number three will be considered separately. Number four, consultant agreement with NB Engineering Doing Business as Evergreen Storm HTO Spokane for an effectiveness study to determine treatment efficiencies of non-vegetated stormwater via stormwater by a retention facilities from August 1, 2023 to July 31, 2027, $101,035 plus tax of applicable. Number five, accept funds from Washington State Department of Commerce Emergency Housing Fund for the purpose of subgranting to Young Women's Christian Association Catholic Charities, Volunteers of America, Family Promise Transitions, Women's Hurst Spokane Neighborhood Action Partners, the Salvation Army, and Truth Ministries. $3,934,639 relates to special budget ordinance C 36436. Number six, local area A&E professional services consultant agreement with Horix Engineering Spokane for traffic control planning and design on on-call services for 2023 to 2024, non-federal, not to exceed $200,000. Number seven, final two-year contract renewal with Big Belly Solar LLC, Nida, Massachusetts, for lease of network solar waste receptacles for the downtown core area from March 8, 2023 through March 7, 2025. Annual expenditure, $74,143.44, plus tax of applicable. Number eight, consultant agreement with McMillan Incorporated Boise, Idaho, for construction, management, and engineering support services for upriver dam from September 1, 2023 through December 31, 2024, $394,923, plus tax of applicable. Number nine, acceptance of 2023 BJA fiscal year 23 burn discretionary community project funding that was awarded to the city in August 2023. $1,317,000 relates to special budget ordinance C 36438. Number 10, reported the mayor of pending A, claims and payments of previously approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library through August 25, 2023. Total $14,96,484.39 with Parks and Library claims approved with respective boards. Warrants excluding Parks and Library total $13,515,222.2. B, claims and payments of previously approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library through September 1, 2023. Total $9,723,826.7 with Parks and Library claims approved with respective boards. Warrants excluding Parks and Library total $9,525,756.45. C, payroll claims of previously approved obligations through September 2, 2023. Number 11, City Council meeting minutes for August 21, August 24, August 31, and September 7, 2023.
Thank you. We have one person signed up to testify.
Hello. I'm Justin Haller. Live in District 1. And I'm not really happy with the money that you waste on useless projects. It's really disappointing and sad to hear that four of you are on the Board of Directors at STA, and you're also going to approve projects for the STA. I think you should recuse yourself from any decision-making for taxpayer dollars being spent for the STA. There's several other issues, too many to list. I agree with most of the people who spoke up in an open forum about most of the things. It's, it's very disheartening that you don't think about the money you spend. You just go, oh, yeah, we'll just spend it. We'll just tax people more. And then you won't fund the police. You won't fund new fire trucks for the police department. And then you'll go and say, oh, I don't feel comfortable helping law enforcement. You'll spend, and it's, some of your predecessors approved the fire trucks or the, the electric cars. It wasn't you necessarily, but you as a whole don't, you're not good stewards with our money. It's very frustrating to see what you do with our money. And then there's, there's so many failed projects, like, for instance, the STA, they dug out all these trenches on division, and then they refilled them and then added double buses. That was partly with our taxpayers' money. You know, there, there's so many examples of wasted money. And I'm just sick of the wasted money that you guys just, you know, you can't simultaneously raise taxes.
Council President, is STA in any of the consent?
No.
It's part of, it's part of the wasted money that I'm sick of.
But.
That's what I'm pointing to. Wasted money is wasted money, no matter how you waste it.
But you should be talking about items that are on the consent agenda that we're going to vote on.
I'm talking about the wasted money in general. I don't, I don't know about all the, the issues on the agenda, but I know that you guys waste money. You waste it on useless projects. I'm making examples of the wasted money that you do time and time again. I, as a cyclist who rides 5,000 miles a year, don't need bike lanes, certainly not on Riverside, where little Johnny pops out of the, the passenger side because he doesn't know any better.
But none of this is related to the consent agenda.
It's related to the wasted money. Four of you on the STA board, not okay.
We're not voting on anything on STA.
But it's part of the wasted money.
But that's STA. That's the STA.
But STA is subsidized with taxpayers' money.
Okay.
And four of you are on the board.
Do not yell at me.
We're, we're done. Your time is up. Thank you.
Do not yell at me.
Thank you. Time's up.
It's the only way to get through to you.
Do not yell at me.
Time's up. You can sit down.
Only one of you actually got, responded to my emails. Only one of you.
All right. And let's vote on these, and then we'll take number three separately. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Can we go to number three now, Ms. Sister?
Number three, cultural events. 2023 awards to 34 local nonprofit entities supporting their cultural community events,
Yeah, just, just real quick. My, my wife chairs the Lunar New Year event, and that organization that's behind that is one of the recipients. And so I'll be abstaining from this vote.
Okay, good. Thank you. All right. There are no, nobody's signed up, so all in favor of number three, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining?
Abstain.
Thank you. Can we move on to the legislative agenda? And I'm recommending, see if you all agree, that we take all three. Do we have three?
CHHS.
All three of the, of the Human Services Grants together. Okay, go ahead.
Ordinances, admitting ordinance number C 36345, passed by the City Council December 12, 2022, and entitled. An ordinance adopting the annual budget of the city of Spokane for 2023, making appropriations to the various funds of the city of Spokane government for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2023, and providing it shall take effect immediately upon passage and declaring an emergency appropriating funds in. Ordinance C 36434, Human Services Grant Fund. Number one, increased revenue by $4,795,078. A of the increased revenue, $4,795,078, is provided by the Washington State Department of Commerce as part of the Consolidated Homeless Grant Program. Number two, increased appropriation by $4,795,078. A of the increased appropriation, $321,700, is provided solely for salaries and benefits for the city of Spokane's employees who will be administering the programs. B of the increased appropriation, $267,700, is provided solely for other supplies, services, and equipment required for the administration of the programs. C of the increased appropriation, $4,205,678, is provided solely for contractual services to be provided by the city's subrecipients to deliver services to the community. This action arises from the need to provide services to the citizens of Spokane via the Consolidated Homeless Grant Program. Ordinance C 36435, Human Services Grant Fund. Number one, increased revenue by $2,072,325. A of the increased revenue, $2,072,325, is provided by the Washington State Department of Commerce as part of the Rights of Way Initiative. Number two, increased appropriation by $2,072,325. A of the increased appropriation, $2,072,325, is provided solely for contractual services related to housing and homelessness as part of the ROW Initiative. This action arises from the need to provide housing and homelessness assistance to the citizens of Spokane via the Rights of Way Program. Ordinance C 36436, Human Services Grants Fund. Number one, increased revenue by $3,934,639. A of the increased revenue, $3,934,639, is provided by the Washington State Department of Commerce's Emergency Housing Fund Grant. Number two, increased appropriation by $3,934,639. A of the increased appropriation, $3,757,489, is provided solely for contractual services to be provided by the city's selected subgrantees to deliver emergency housing services and homeless subsidies to the community. B of the increased appropriation, $177,150, is provided solely for the city of Spokane's administrative costs related to the management and disbursement of funding to subgrantees of the Emergency Housing Fund Grant. This action arises from the need to maintain the city of Spokane's current levels of emergency housing services and homeless, homeless subsidies as part of the Emergency Housing Fund Grant.
Okay. Thank you. We have one person online. Dave, you want to? Are you there? Dave, are you there?
I'm here. I was waiting for the recording.
Oh, okay.
In my ear there.
All right. Thank you. Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay. Hello, Council. It looks like you're taking all three of these ordinances, which looks like a total of about $10 million.
Correct.
And what I'm wondering about this is, I don't know if you all heard or, or saw about Jules Helping Hands taking a trip to Las Vegas on our dime. But I'm wondering if any of this money, since it says it will go to subrecipients, would Jules Helping Hands be a subrecipient of some of this money? And would the Council pass a resolution to stop all funding of Jules Helping Hands in light of their little trip to Las Vegas? And I'd also ask that all the good citizens of Spokane, check out www.ontheball509.com and read about what's been going on behind the scenes of our City Council, city, and state. There's lots of eye-opening info there. Also, today, at your urban meeting, it was brought up that one of the painted crosswalks, which I don't know if any of this money funds that, was vandalized the other day. I don't think anyone condones destroying city property. In my opinion, this use of public funds could have been used in more important ways. I would ask the Council, would you support the painting of a crosswalk?
Council President?
With the phrase, "In God We Trust."
This is not relevant to the topic.
That's a phrase used on all of our money and across
Dave?
All of our many forms in this nation. Yes.
Dave, you've strayed from the original topic, which is the Human Services Grants. You were talking about those.
Correct. Okay. Well, yeah, I may have strayed off a little bit there. But the main thing would be not funding any more for Jules Helping Hands of money that is, you know, set up for the housing homeless. And that's all I've got on that then.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any Council commentary?
Council President, I'd like to address that statement regarding Jules Helping Hands and the $12,500 that people say they went to Las Vegas on. So that was part of the American Rescue Plan money that we put out grant proposals that Jules did submit along with a number of other nonprofit organizations. That was vetted by the CHHS on the administration side, that they met all the requirements needed to qualify for those funds, which was revenue replacement. It was granted to them, approved by us in a 4-0 vote. There is follow-up documentation on how the funds were used. So there is misinformation that we just gave that money to them. Those were federal dollars. Yes, they are taxpayers' dollars, but they were federal dollars, not local city dollars that was dispensed. So please read further than just one source of information as to how those funds were allocated and that it was allocated through the administration. So it's not just Council. It was a unified approach through our finance department.
Thank you. Any other Council commentary? Prepare to vote. Okay. Sorry. You're too late, honey. We got to do this again. Do this again. Betsy Shy. Okay. One, two, three, vote. There we go. Councilmember Bingle, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to resolutions, please.
There's still two more ordinances.
Oh, okay. I thought we took them all together.
Just that it was a public safety.
Oh, all right. Go ahead.
Ordinance C 36437, Arterial Street Fund. Number one, increased revenue by $5,4,517. A of the increased revenue, $5,4,517, is provided by grant funding from the Washington State Department of Transportation's Local Bridge Program. Number one, increased appropriation by $5,4,517. A of the increased appropriation, $5,4,517, is provided solely for the construction of fixed assets for the Maple Street Bridge Deck Repair Project. This action arises from the need to accept grant funding from the WSDOT Local Bridge Program for the Maple Street Bridge Deck Repair Project.
Okay. We don't have anyone signed up, so any Council commentary? All right. Prepare to vote. Too late.
It's just broken.
Let's try it again. One, two, three, vote. There we go. Councilmember Bingle.
Aye.
Thank you. All right.
I think it's the button.
Yeah, I'm sure. Operator error. Go ahead. Next one.
Ordinance C 36438, Public Safety and Judicial Grant Fund. Number one, increased revenue by $1,317,000. A of the increased revenue, $1,317,000, is provided by the Department of Justice through their fiscal year 23 burn discretionary community project funding grants program. Number two, increased appropriation by $1,317,000. A of the increased appropriation, $1,317,000, is provided solely for procurement of technology and equipment related to public safety. This action arises from the need to create budget capacity for Department of Justice grant funding that has been awarded to the city of Spokane to improve the criminal justice system, prevent juvenile delinquency, and assist victims of crime.
Okay. Again, we don't have any, anyone signed up, so any Council commentary? Go ahead.
Just in case she's watching, I just want to really thank Shawna Ernst. She did a great presentation today. She's always really good. I know she works hard at putting this stuff together, and I just think she needs to know that City Council really appreciates her work.
Really, really appreciates her.
Really appreciate her work.
Thank you for saying that. All right. Prepare to vote. Yes.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Now on to resolutions.
Resolution 2023-77, requesting a crime prevention through environmental design audit of the Monroe Street Bridge.
Okay. And we have one person signed up, Will Hewlings. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Will Hewlings. I live downtown. Speaking of the Monroe Street Bridge, something needs to be done. It's pretty disgusting. I go to my Fresh Basket. I shop there. I ride across the bridge. What do I see? People camping out, somebody disassembling bicycles there, ride past people doing drugs with their foil. Sometimes I ride past, I can't even get through there because they're blocked in the way, so I have to sit there and stop. Imagine some, a woman with her kids out enjoying beautiful Spokane, and they got to walk past that. It's sick. Then you walk past the back of the library. I mean, that's another story. Same type of people hanging out there. So my suggestion is maybe them little ALCOs, maybe fill them in, maybe put something there pretty so they can't hang out there and use that as a camping spot and do their graffiti, drugs. I mean, it smells like urine and feces. My friends walk their expensive service dogs downtown. They got to walk across a bridge. City employees, I've come into City Hall, made a complaint, and city employees that work here have complained about the same thing to 311, which is a joke. work here have complained about the same thing to 311, which is a joke. But like other people said, there's a lot of things that could be done in our city, but there's certain council members that decide that they have to condemn the mayor and do all this other stuff. I want answers. I come up here, I don't get up here just to talk. I want answers. I live down here. I don't know where you guys live, but you're elected officials, you're public servants here to serve the city, not attack other people. I mean, you should be worried about what's happening on the Monroe Street Bridge. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's why we have the resolution. So any council commentary? Go ahead.
Yeah. I think we've talked a lot about this, but I do want to thank my cosponsors on this, councilmembers Bingle and Wilkerson, for helping advance this. I think it's really important that we address the issues that we are experiencing on the Monroe Street Bridge. I have heard from so many of our city employees, county employees, my own experience that I have shared from this dais with our little guy and the fentanyl, really frustrating. And so something has to be done. It needs to be done quickly. And so I want to make sure that this council makes it clear that we want to see this sub-ted analysis done, and, you know, once we get that back, we can make the investments that we need to, to make those alcoves much safer. Obviously, it's a challenging situation when you're a pedestrian on the side of that bridge, and there really is nowhere for you to go as you're approaching those alcoves other than jumping into traffic, which is clearly not an option. So making this a much safer place for our pedestrians and for folks that, you know, our tourists, our community members, everybody, I think, is a really important deal. So that's why I'm bringing this forward. I want to see those issues corrected and grateful to the support from council.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Thank you. Councilmember McCattcart, you know, the challenge is just not us making the resolution. It has to be a partnership with the administration. Our form of government, we cannot supervise staff. We can only make requests. So a lot of this falls really on the other side of the House, and we are just doing this resolution to show that we support. We hear you. We see it from our windows on the seventh floor. We want to do something, so we're just making a statement that everybody knows we are listening and we want to work with the administration to get this done. And this is the first step to make that happen in a united way.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right. Prepare to vote. Thank you. Passes 7-0. All right. And our first reading ordinances have been deferred till September 25?
The first, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
And I'll read the first readings to the final reading. I understood it was deferred to the 25th.
25th, yeah.
Not the first reading, though.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Resolution 2023-78 of the city of Spokane, Washington, providing for the issuance and sale of a taxable limited tax general obligation bond in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $172,911.55 to secure an interfund loan from the Spokane investment pool to finance the acquisition of a Zamboni 450 ice resurfancy machine for the ice skating ribbon, fixing the date for maturity, interest rate, terms, and covenants of the bond, establishing the provisions for repayment of the interfund loan, establishing thereby authorizing the sale and delivery of the bond to the city, and providing for other matters properly relating thereto.
We don't have anyone signed up. Council commentary? And that's the little machine that goes around and cleans up the ice.
And they promise we get to drive it.
And you get to drive it. Yes. Okay. Great. Prepare to vote. Thank you. All right. Next.
First reading ordinances, ordinance C 36439, providing an increase in city business registration fees, amending Spokane Municipal Code Section 8.02.02.06A and .02.02.02.06B of the Spokane Municipal Code. And ordinance C 36440, relating to noise control, amending Spokane Municipal Code Section 13.02.0310 to Chapter 13.02, and amending Spokane Municipal Code Section 10.70.040 to Chapter 10.70 of the Spokane Municipal Code, and setting an effective date. Further action is deferred on the first reading ordinances.
Okay. Dukoby, do we want?
Yes, we're taking two.
We are taking two testimonies. So Dave, you're first up. Are you there?
(inaudible).
Dave, go ahead.
We are taking two testimonies. But Dave, you're first up.
He's on the way. He's on the way.
Dave, go ahead.
Hello, council. If you're calling on me, I must be, I must have signed on the wrong thing. I don't have anything on this, but thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next up is Justin. Okay, they're going. He's gone. All right. Thank you. We are at the end of our agenda, and just a reminder, next week is Town Hall. We have 15 neighborhoods signed up to give a presentation at 10 minutes apiece, so you guys all do the arithmetic. That's going to be a long night. We're going to put them first, and open forum will follow the Town Hall. So you're all aware, don't come here and go, wait a minute. Our neighborhoods always come first, so we want to make sure they get their time. So until then, we will see you next week, same time, same station. Thank you. We're adjourned.